Regular meeting number 23 will now come to order. May we now have the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Tyson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. This evening, I want to just have a moment of silence as we have taken the last several months as we've gone through COVID, reminding folks that we are still going through a pandemic. Since our last meeting two weeks ago, we have lost 41 more members of our community to COVID. And so if you would join me in a moment of silence for those folks and their families and for us to continue to move forward. Thank you. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, present. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing lawful movement to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, present, harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read to the public?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? And we're going to start with President Potem, was with Brown.
Thank you, council president. Yes, tonight I have Resolution 0105X-2020 to condemn House Bill 680 of the 133rd Ohio General Assembly and call for safe and accessible voting options in the 2020 election. In the face of ongoing, of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, it is more important than ever to ensure safe and secure access to voting for every resident in Ohio. But inexplicably, Republican leaders in the Ohio House of Representatives have chosen to do the exact opposite through passage of House Bill 680. The bill prohibits prepaid postage, even though federal funds cover these costs, needlessly making it harder to vote by mail, making it financially harder indeed. The bill prohibits public health standards at Election Day polling places and needlessly makes in-person voting more dangerous. The bill initially contained provisions to reduce in-person early voting days, which would, of course, put more strain on polling locations in the middle of a global pandemic, put more people inside them on Election Day. And it contained provisions to withhold absentee request forms. These objectionable, unnecessary, and harmful provisions were opposed 80 to 1 in proponent-opponent testimony during hearings. Through passage of this resolution, city council is taking action by condemning House Bill 680 and any similar legislation that limits voting opportunities at a time when we must, really at all times, we must be expanding access to the vote and ensuring that every person has equal opportunity for this fundamental American right. We are imploring the Ohio Senate to reject this legislation and urging Governor Wine to veto such legislation should it reach his desk. We encourage state leaders to instead adopt pro-voter policies like enabling online absentee requests, prepaying postage on election mail, reforming barriers that unreasonably disqualify Ohioans from having their vote counted, expanding in-person early voting locations, and implementing automatic voter registration. We intend to be a role model by doing everything we can in our power to support voter enfranchisement in Columbus. Access to voting is the bedrock of our democracy, and we will do what we can to protect that right for the citizens of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues? Council President.
Thank you, President Potem. I just wanted to speak up and lend my support to this resolution. I think as we have experienced 2020 and we head into a presidential election, one thing is for sure is that this November, the effects of coronavirus and many things will still be present in our communities. And to your point, the city of Columbus is going to lean in and to continue to use our voice to make sure that there is voter enfranchisement and not disenfranchisement. And so just really appreciate your leadership. This is a civil rights issue. This is about making sure that everybody has the right, the equal right to step up and to vote. And so I appreciate your leadership and certainly would support calling on the Senate to reject this and certainly for the governor to veto if it gets to his desk. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much, Council President. It is indeed a civil rights issue, a critical one. Are there any other questions or colleagues? Speak up if there are from my colleagues because I can't see all of you. Okay. With that, I move for this resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, present, harden.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Councilmember Dorance.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I do not have any resolutions tonight, but I wanted to make one quick announcement. At this time, I want to announce an exciting development from our Department of Public Utilities with the help of the Department of Technology. Two teams I've got the pleasure of working with as chair of those respective committees. Many folks are familiar with the Department of Public Utilities' low-income and senior discount rate programs. Many are city take advantage of these programs to receive a substantial savings on their utility bills. However, up until this past weekend, those who wished to apply for these discounts had to fill out a paper application on a brochure handed out at community events and mail in the documents to be approved to join the program. We know that this served as a barrier for some to access these savings, which is why we've worked with the Department of Public Utilities and Technology to allow for folks to apply for this program online. You can now apply by visiting columbus.gov/utilities. Customers who participate in assistance programs such as HEEP, Medicaid, SNAP, and public housing may be eligible for a discount on their water and sewer bills. Definitely want to say thank you to Director Davies, Director Orth, and Deputy Director O'Grady for helping to make this this possibility. And I will also be posting a link to the application on my Facebook page after the meeting tonight. So just wanted to make sure that folks were aware that we've done some work to make sure that this is more accessible to folks in the public. So that's all I have this evening, though. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you. Tonight I have Resolution 0098X-2020 to celebrate the city and residents of Columbus and proclaim June 14th as 614 Day in the city of Columbus. Yesterday, I had an amazing experience celebrating this year's 614 Day with Black women from across our community in a peaceful protest against police brutality. All of our celebrations look a little different this year, but I think it's more important than ever that we lean on the strengths of our community to uplift ourselves as well as the need for change, compassion, and community. So once again, I'd like to thank the organizers of 614 Day for providing our city with another opportunity to celebrate our uniqueness and to bring us together even during these challenging times. With that, I will turn it over to Johann Terrell, one of the organizers from 614 Day.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Favor. I appreciate you so much. I just want to thank the city again. You know, for those who don't know, they know that I love Columbus and I love helping our communities in this city. And so, you know, 614 Day is all about supporting locals. So instead of trying to cancel it, we wanted to make sure that we use it as a platform to support our local businesses, our local organizations, and more importantly this year, our local voices. So we really focused on championing local this year, and it was, it was awesome. It was different this year, but thank you again for all of your support and helping us keep, continue to drive it and build that support for the local community. And it definitely did that yesterday. So it was a great time. We raised money for local nonprofits. We helped local businesses get some money through our virtual marketplace. And out of that, we just had a lot of great conversations, great entertainment and performers. And that's what it's all about, celebrating Columbus in a unique way. And so we continue to look forward to it growing. And thank you again for giving us the support of the city, and we look forward to doing with you. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. We also have a speaker for this ordinance tonight. Rosemary Williams, are you, are you there? Rosemary Williams?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't think you have my picture, though. Right?
No, we do not.
All righty. Well, I am Rosemary Williams, and I'm a member of Bred's Housing Committee, and we do support this resolution. Columbus is special in so many ways. Our community has a mix of cultures and people that make Columbus a place that I am glad to call home. This council has taken steps to help many families have access to safe, decent, affordable housing. We applaud those efforts. At the same time, more is needed. Thank you to Councilmember Favor for the letter you sent to us. We look forward to our meeting with you on this Wednesday. We continue to urge council to utilize community development block grant dollars allocated under the CARES Act. Please do the necessary research to ensure that this funding can be utilized in a way that is compliant with the federal standards, as have cities such as Charlotte, North Carolina, and San Antonio, Texas. This $4.3 million should be used to support households that are most at risk. Building this funding vehicle now ensures we can release new funding effectively should it become available. We are confused that council did not add the emergency legislation for the $4.3 million to tonight's agenda. We know families who have lost income and jobs and desperately need access to emergency assistance. Thank you very much.
Well, once again, I want to extend my appreciation to Johann Terrell and all of the organizers for 614 Day. We truly appreciate the energy, the time, the effort that you all took to make sure that even in the midst of a pandemic, even in the midst of civil unrest and crisis, that we take an opportunity to celebrate one another in Columbus. So thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? And I can't see everybody, so I'm just looking at President Harden right now. None? Okay. With that, I would move for adoption.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, present, harden.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge June 19th, which is coming up this Friday, also known as Juneteenth. Juneteenth is an American holiday celebrated annually on June 19th. It commemorates June 19, 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger read federal orders in Galveston, Texas that all previously enslaved people in Texas were free. Although the Emancipation Proclamation had formally freed them almost two and a half years earlier, the American and the American Civil War had largely ended with the defeat of the Confederate states in April. Texas was one of the most remote of the slave states with a low presence of Union troops. So enforcement of the proclamation, excuse me, had been slow and inconsistent. Celebrations of June 19th date back to 1866, at first involving church-centered community gatherings in Texas. It spread across the South and became more commercialized in the 1920s and the 1930s. During the Civil Rights Movement of the 1960s, it was eclipsed by the struggle for post-war civil rights, but grew in popularity in the 1970s with a focus on African-American freedom and arts. By the 21st century, Juneteenth was celebrated in most major cities across the United States. I just want to take a moment to honor Juneteenth. There will be celebrations in a socially distant manner that will be taking place on Friday and throughout the weekend. And with that, Council President Harden, that is all I have.
Thank you so much for bringing us that history today. Very important. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. I have one resolution this evening. Ordinance number 99X-2020 to recognize the strength, courage, and perseverance of millions of refugees and to celebrate Saturday, June 20th, 2020 as World Refugee Day in the city of Columbus. The United Nations General Assembly adopted Resolution 5576 on December 4th, 2000 to officially recognize June 20th as World Refugee Day. And every 20 minutes, people have, leave everything behind to escape war, persecution, and terror. An unprecedented 70.8 million people around the world have been forced from home by conflict and persecution at the end of 2018. More than 16,000 refugees have resettled in the central Ohio area since 1983, with most of them arriving within the last 10 years. The city of Columbus has a proud history of welcoming refugees by offering a safe and thriving environment to support displaced persons and families seeking a new beginning. And there is a network of resettlement agencies who are actively working with the most vulnerable refugees in Columbus, regardless of their country of origin or religious beliefs. And through resiliency, self-sufficiency, and entrepreneurship, local refugees have established new lives and built networks of support and commerce, which have had a positive impact in Columbus for new and existing residents. And the local refugee community contributes an estimated $1.6 billion to the Columbus economy and supports over 21,000 jobs in the region. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate Saturday, June 20th, 2020 as World Refugee Day and renews its commitment to welcoming and supporting all new residents in the city of Columbus. This evening, we have Nadia Casvan, the director and co-founder of Us Together, to share a few words on this resolution. Nadia?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Remy, President Harding, President Potem, Brown, and city council members. Last September, the city council invited me to speak in support of a resolution celebrating the contributions of immigrants, refugees, and new Americans in the form of a welcoming week. At that event, I said, while there is so much that Columbus does for refugees, there is even more that refugees do for Columbus. The world has changed drastically in the time since I spoke those words. But the past weeks and months have shown us that they are true as ever. As we navigate a pandemic that has spread around the world, World Refugee Day on June 20th is an opportunity to celebrate our neighbors that have come from around the world. Also, World Refugee Day is just one day of the year. Refugees are neighbors, friends, and coworkers every day of the year. As a refugee myself, I co-founded Us Together, a nonprofit organization that deploys many refugees in our mission to resettle and provide integration services to newly arrived refugees. We haven't had many new refugee families arriving to Columbus in the last months, but we know the hardships that refugees experience around the world. More than 70 million people have been forced to leave their homes and are in search of safety from violence and persecution. For them, the pandemic has made a difficult situation even worse. And here in Columbus, over the past few months, Us Together has been part of an inspiring community-wide effort along with other agencies that resettle and serve refugees to ensure that our diverse refugee populations have resources to weather the COVID-19 pandemic. The particular challenges refugees have faced these past few months, such as language barriers, limited access to care, and uncertain landlord-tenant relations are difficult. But they are not new. But also not new are the grit and determination of refugees, so many of whom fled violence and persecution in their homelands for a chance at a better life in the United States. Time and again, refugees have proven through their hard work and resilience that they can make our city a stronger, better, and a more welcoming place. In Columbus and surrounding areas, more than 16,000 refugees own and operate estimated 873 businesses and support more than 21,000 jobs. Refugees host cultural events around the city. Refugees run for office. Refugees start families. Refugees are Americans. This is what we celebrate on World Refugee Day. Today, I am pleased to offer my full support of the city council resolution recognizing June 20th, 2020, as World Refugee Day. As the resolution states, the city council renews its commitment to welcoming and supporting all new residents of the city of Columbus. This has always been a part of my mission and of Us Together's mission, and so I hold these words to a high standard. Though the uncertainty of these times makes it hard to predict what our world will look like tomorrow, I can say with great certainty that refugees will be an important part of Columbus' story since June 20th and every day after. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nadia. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight. We know that in Columbus that we welcome immigrants and refugees from every continent on this earth, and that's what really makes Columbus special. And although this administration has used every opportunity to restrict refugees from entering into this country, especially during these COVID pandemic times, we know that they're an important part of the cultural vibrancy here in the city of Columbus. And we welcome and sincerely hope that they continue to come to our great community to make it even better. So thank you so much with this resolution. With this resolution, I ask if my colleagues have any comments or questions or anything they'd like to say this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next Councilmember we'll come to is Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I don't have any resolutions, but I do have some announcements. The first announcement is on the 19th of June is World Sickle Cell Day, and just want to share that the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals will be hosting a mobile blood drive on Saturday, June 20th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Ashbury North United Methodist Church at 1586 Clifton Avenue. And so, please come out and donate blood. Again, not only because for sickle cell patients, but we just need individuals to donate blood for the health and well-being of our community. I also want to announce that also on June 27th will be National HIV Testing Day. Our community is now, in regards to COVID-19 testing, we now have community testing, and Columbus Public Health has started testing at its facility at 240 Parsons Avenue, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and no one returned away for inability to pay. And if you have any questions about coming over to have COVID-19 testing done, you can dial 614-645-1519. And I know that recently, Council President Harden, as well as Councilmember Remy, both had went over, based upon they had been out in public, they'd been out at the protesting, and so we're also recommending that anyone that is out protesting, we certainly appreciate you out there protesting and sharing your voice with our community, but also want to make sure that if you are, please, you can go over to Columbus Public Health and get a COVID test. And then we also have our community partners who are joining in to support us. We have the Heart of Ohio Family Health, which is a federally qualified health center. You can dial 614-235-5555. Lower Lights Christian Health Center, 614-274-1455. Primary One Health, they have it at three locations. Please feel free to dial 614-859-1895. Equitas Health is also providing tests, 614-32334, at its King Lincoln Medical Center on East Long Street. And finally, KIP Columbus, at the KIP School at 2900 Inspired Drive, 293-4000. So, please take advantage of community testing. You don't have to have symptoms. Anyone can get a test now. And lastly, the Columbus Public Health, the Immunization Clinic will reopen by appointment only on June today, June 15th, and the priority is given to children under six years old. We will not have any adult vaccinations yet, but for your children under six, please call Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any comments by our elected officials? I see we have representatives from the City Attorney's Office, from the city auditors here. I see Judge Barrows.
Sir, thank you.
That's awesome. At this time, I request that the following ordinance be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda, Finance Committee 1269-2020. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 1267 and 1271-2020. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 961, 1235, 1243, 1255, 1274, 1325-2020. Technology Committee Ordinance 1248-2020. Economic Development Committee Ordinance is 1337 and 1338-2020. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 1201 and 1203-2020.
We have one speaker on the first reading portion of the agenda, Ms. Anisa Awad, who's joining us via WebEx, to speak on ordinance 1271. Is Ms. Awad present?
Yes, I am, President Harden. Thank you very much, and thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. It is always very appreciated. I want to be honest, my comments are not specifically oriented towards ordinance 1271-2020, but on a larger conversation of the budget and financing in general, I want us to maybe think about the things that have been happening the past two weeks, which I know many city council members have been in attendance with. I don't have my video on, but I am suffering from a couple issues from the Columbus Police Department using excessive force during protests that were allowed and just me exercising my right to protest. I'm here representing the organization, the newly-founded organization, the People's Budget Columbus, to just have higher transparency in the budget process and have higher engagement as to where our money is going. And something that we are trying to get off the bat, you know, first and foremost, is us defunding the Columbus Police Department. Columbus is highly, you know, innovative in all other aspects of, you know, our businesses and our organizations, and it has occurred in many other cities, such as Camden, New Jersey, and Compton in Los Angeles, and over $350 million going to the police, you know, budget annually and with a $17 million increase, whereas, you know, things like education, which obviously do have different funding via property taxes and such, but only receiving $7 million, is something that has definitely alarmed a lot of people. And I definitely believe that, you know, abolition is the only way to, like, fix racial injustices. We are, like, in understanding that the current police system we live under is created and was created under, you know, like, believing that black people were property, and in order for our black community to heal, it is absolutely necessary that people that aren't, you know, that weren't born or raised in their communities, that are, you know, much more likely to harm them, and statistically in Columbus have the greatest, you know, percentage of police brutality in the United States in 2016, we definitely should be thinking about where our money is going. And a majority of Columbus citizens do not want that money or a single penny going to the Columbus Police Department in the 2021 budget. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record? And I apologize, we were having a little technical difficulties here on my side, too. I apologize. But, Madam Clerk?
Resolution of Expression 97X-2020, Finance Committee Ordinance is 1110, 1212, 1213, 1239, 1245, 1249, 1292, 1314-2020. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 1176, 1177, 1194-2020. Public Safety Ordinance is 1084, 1191, 1233-2020. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance 1079, 1133, 1149, 1156, 1215, 1230, 1250, 1273, 1278, 1294-2020. Technology Committee Ordinance is 1020 and 1164-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 845, 1023, 1040, 1172, and 1254-2020. Housing Committee Ordinance is 1237, 1327, 1350-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordinance 1200-2020. Economic Development Committee Ordinance is 1187, 1217, 1315, 1342-2020. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 1334-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. The first person is Andrea O'Neill, coming through via WebEx. Is Andrea O'Neill with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can, and this is just a reminder that we have you speaking on ordinance 1194, and so the topic should be specific to that, as well as if you give us your name, any organization that you represent, and you certainly have three minutes, and welcome to council.
Thank you very much. My name is Andrea O'Neill, and I am President of the Board of Trustees for the Golden Hobby Gift Shop, located at 630 South Third Street in German Village. I am joining the meeting this evening in support of ordinance 1194-2020. For anyone listening this evening who is not familiar with our shop, the Golden Hobby Gift Shop is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. For nearly 50 years, we have provided a venue for central Ohio residents aged 50 and older to display and sell a wide range of handcrafted creations, including paintings, woodworking, fiber arts, ceramics, and much, much more. I hope that many of you have visited our shop. The Golden Hobby Gift Shop has enjoyed 49 years of support from the city of Columbus' Recreation and Parks Department, 40 of those years in our current location in German Village. We will turn 50 years old next year and hope to be able to plan a golden anniversary celebration. We understand that such a celebration cannot take place in our current location, but certainly hope we will be reestablished in a new location to celebrate with our many followers and shoppers. We have recognized for some time that the condition of our building, constructed in 1864, has continued to decline, and the cost to renovate it for us would likely be prohibitive for the city. We have always been proud to share the history of our building with visitors from literally around the globe, and so many have enjoyed exploring the building and imagining it in its original state. So, we're happy that our building will return to its intended purpose as a school, and we wouldn't want it to be anything else. Our shop's operating model is unlike any other in the country that we are aware of that receives city support for a volunteer senior-run nonprofit retail operation. Our mission is to support and enhance the creativity, social, and mental well-being of social, of central Ohio residents aged 50 and older. We provide volunteer opportunities that enhance a sense of belonging, purpose, and self-esteem. We offer opportunities to broaden and increase creativity, and we foster a community that values and celebrates that creativity. We represent and operate the largest senior program supported by the department, with over 80 volunteers contributing over 19,000 volunteer hours, over 350 consignors, over 18,000 visitors from 38 states, 19 countries, and nearly 15,000 handcrafted items in the shop. Of course, this is an emotional time for our senior consignors and volunteers on top of the stress of COVID-19, so it is a difficult time to not be engaged in these activities, and we hope that a new location will be found soon so we can prepare for a safe opening and help to bring back a sense of purpose again for our seniors. Every day, the Golden Hobby Gift Shop validates the sense of personal value for senior residents in central Ohio. Many may be retired from paid employment, but they continue to create value thanks to their creative spirit. The Golden Hobby Gift Shop is very proud to create an outlet for such valuable creativity. I'm almost done. Do I still get more time?
If we can finish in the last three or four seconds.
Oh, three or four seconds.
Just wrap it up for us.
All right, I'll skip and say thank you. Serving our clients and thousands of visitors at 630 South Third Street has been a great experience at a home base. We do want to thank the city of Columbus for your continued support of senior creativity, social, and mental well-being. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Councilmember Remy?
Yeah, I have to speak to this just for a moment, because every year during German Village Lights, we take the kids down and they do their Christmas shopping at the Golden Hobby. It is a wonderful place, and so many people pour their heart and soul into the crafts that they make, and it's just a great place. So, I'm hopeful that you find a place. When I saw this on the agenda, I was asking lots of questions to make sure that this continues, because it's a great community restore. So, thanks, Ms. O'Neill, for speaking to us this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next speaker we have on the agenda is Melissa Lapinski, joining us via WebEx, to speak against an ordinance 1084-2020.
Hi, my name is Melissa Lapinski. Thank you so much for welcoming me.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak, and if you give us your name and any organization that you would represent, and welcome to council.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Melissa Lapinski, and I'm with Freedom of Justice, newly organization, and so from my understanding, ordinance 1084 is asking for more military presence in our police force, and with research on JAG program, it concluded my fears as it furthers the department's mission by assisting state, local, and trivial law enforcement efforts to prevent or reduce crime and violence. We do not need military efforts within our police force. We have seen what that does. This will only make our communities more leery of police force, as well as induce fear. It will also undermine what myself and my friends from Freedom of Justice and other wonderful organizations are hearing from the people themselves, that the military is absolutely not needed in any of our police forces on the street. And the people are actually asking for defunding. They have, they've had it. They're very frustrated, scared, angry, and want change, especially within the police department. Why, like, essentially what we're wanting is to petition for money to go elsewhere. Why aren't we having that sent somewhere such as the medical system, so they can be sent to someone such as Jerome Thomas, who died in police custody hours after calling 911 and asking for help? Now, police unions are discreet, and they're not transparent with our tax dollars and what they cover. And police often say that their job is dangerous, and that's a fair statement, but now they are becoming a liability. The police unions make them even bigger liabilities when those who negotiate their jobs have stacked complaints, and not limited to deadly force, but are still able to be able to serve and protect the community per se. So, that is what ordinance 1084 will assist with, more force, more violence, and possibly more deaths by the ones who are here to protect us. So, instead, I ask that we insist that if they are to keep their unions, which should absolutely be dissolved, but they should be able to carry liability insurance. Everyone in America needs to carry insurance in order to be compliant and keep their jobs. They are not above the law. The Committee for Professional Policing tried to make officers carry liability insurance back in 2016. They are located in Minneapolis. That was four years ago, prior to George Floyd's death. The officer who killed him had 18 complaints that only came to light after Mr. Floyd's death. This Minneapolis law could have saved his life. They had to indirectly get that on the ballot, and it was shot down. I ask that perhaps you would consider directly putting this on the ballot, or would be forced to indirectly get it there by collecting signatures? And we will finish what they started back in 2016 to make our community safer from malice and incompetent officers. If they wish to carry insurance, they wish to have a job sponsored by our taxes. Police defunding sounds radical, but in reality, it's logical, and adding more force before accountability and insured safety is set in place is negligent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Lapinski. Can I just ask that you send me your information in writing, just the background on the liability insurance, and what I'm sure that it is appropriately documented in the record, as well as vetted by our teams in the many discussions that we're having about real police reform? And so, if you can help, if you could send it to my office, I'd greatly appreciate it.
May I have that information, sir? I do apologize.
Sure. It is sgharden@columbus.gov. Sure, it is sgharden@columbus.gov, and I'll make sure that it is shared with my colleagues.
All right, thank you so much, you're a blessing.
All right, take care, have a great day. The next speaker to come before council is Joshua Williams. Joshua is actually in council. Joshua? Joshua is also speaking on ordinance 1084-2020. Joshua, yes, sir, welcome to council. I think it's set up to go. Just a reminder that you have three minutes, and if you just state your name and any organization that you're with. Actually, one second. Guys, is Joshua's?
Yes, he's set up.
It's ready to go now, it's ready to go.
Joshua Williams with Minority Movement, where newly, new organization. Basically, thank you, first off. I just want to talk a little bit about the military, I'm sorry, just the adding 1084 military presence within the police forces, and that is necessary within our streets, and also as defining the police department, because it's just not cause for it, and just us spending more money within the budget for 2021 is just not cause for it. It's just no presence that they have, and they're not doing anything for us. Again, I'm not going to say anything, because I'm sure you heard Melissa talk, so I'm not going to just pick you up back over everything she talked about. So it's just the same thing she said, I'm standing for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Does any of my, do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Williams? All right, thank you, Mr. Williams, for giving your testimony. We appreciate your advocacy. The next person to speak before council is Rachel Winning. Rachel is joining us via WebEx to speak on ordinance 1084.
Yes, thank you.
Rachel, just want to remind you, you got three minutes, and if you would give me your name and any organization that you represent, and welcome to council.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Winning, and I am the Vice Chair of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission and a Columbus attorney. However, I'm speaking as a private citizen only this evening, and I'm speaking in opposition to ordinance 1269-2020 and also 1084-2020, because they're interrelated, but I'll only use three minutes total. 1269 authorizes $123,800 to enter into a contract with Arrow Computers to purchase a mapping system, keyboard kits and accessories used by police helicopters to track cars and people using geolocation. In understanding that this ordinance uses money received by a grant, and as proposed, does not require expenditure by the city, I believe that approval of this ordinance would still be a poor decision. The Columbus Police Department, according to our city website, has six helicopters, which is one more than the city of Los Angeles, although Los Angeles has more than four times the population of Columbus. And in my neighborhood, the Hilltop, police helicopters hover over our neighborhood on a daily basis. One actually flew over as I finished my statement this afternoon. Columbus does not need more technology to facilitate the surveillance and tracking of our residents, and this is particularly true when we know that Columbus police use force on black and brown residents disproportionately to white residents, as delineated in the recent Matrix report. And combined with city council's declaration that racism is a public health crisis, we should not fund technology that will be used in the same manner to disproportionately target minority residents, particularly when the vast majority of changes recommended by the Matrix report and the Mayor's Safety Commission have not been implemented yet. The use of this grant money also requires that the data gathered be shared with the Department of Justice's Global Justice Information Sharing Initiative. This allows our city helicopters to be used to gather data that's then shared with the federal government, and this is especially concerning when we see how our federal government currently operates with demands that local police support their anti-immigrant policies, and with President Trump calling for anti-fascists to be categorized as a terrorist group. This money should be foregone. If there's an alternate use of the money that could benefit the public, that should be explored. If the grant must go unused, then I ask that you leave it unused. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winning, to Ms. Winning, to Ms. Lapinski, to Mr. Williams. Just want to say that we hear you, we appreciate you. We've, over the last couple of weeks, received many emails calling for redistribution of resources away from police towards alternative programming. Our team is looking at programs and models from across the country so that we can ensure Columbus residents are safe, they're healthy, and we can all flourish. But I think it's a bigger conversation that we have to have in a comprehensive way, and so I appreciate the engagement. I think you will be seeing specific conversations and engagement from this council and from the administration that will really speak to our values around this space. And so I hear you, we will, and really, I think it's a broader conversation about what we are even asking our police to do. How we, you know, for many years, we've asked police to solve the opioid crisis, to solve mental health issues, to solve our poverty issues, and as we have this conversation, I think we really have to do so in a comprehensive way that acknowledges the good officers that we have out there, the work that they do to keep us all safe, but the realities of how we want to feel safe and policed as a community going forward. And so we are looking forward to having that be a community conversation, and so your dialogue is appreciated as we move forward with a lot of these topics. Are there any specific questions or comments from my colleagues?
Council President?
Please.
I just want to note for clarification of the record and the speakers that came that 1269 has been removed from consent, because I know that Ms. Winning just kind of spoke to both and yielded her three minutes on 1269. So just to clarify, that's not, 1269 is not up for vote on consent.
I appreciate you, Chair.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
No moves.
Clerk, could you please call the row by voice?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Baber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, the consent action portion of the agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of the 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember President Pro Tim Brown. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. And just going slightly out of order, since we may still have the attention of some speakers who came in tonight, we remove 1269 from consent so that I could bring it forward and move to table the ordinance indefinitely. As Council President said, we are committed to having a conversation on this council about what public safety is, and ensuring that we're funding a police department that protects citizens. We're funding public safety that protects citizens, and that conversation is critical. So I am moving tonight to table ordinance 1269 indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row. Ordinance is tabled.
Thank you. Next, that was then the Finance Committee. Next in the Finance Committee is Resolution 0096X-2020 to adopt the 2021 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. We are tabling this resolution tonight in order to hold a hearing during our regular city council meeting on June 29. And at that time, I will move for passage. I request to table this ordinance until the June 29 meeting.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Doran, Baber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1324-2020 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders with Role Model Magazine LLC and Lynn Schilling for the purchase of face coverings for distribution to the community to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $112,500 from the CARES Act Fund on established purchase orders, and to declare an emergency. As we know by now, it is strongly recommended that all Ohioans wear face coverings in public to help slow the spread of COVID-19. I want to take a moment to thank my colleague, Councilmember Daniel Remy, for your incredible work, Councilmember, on standing up the Mask Up Columbus initiative, and helping to spread the word around our community about the importance of masks in protecting others, as well as ourselves, of course. Wearing a mask is a step we can all take to protect our city, our neighborhoods, our families, and our communities. But not everyone has easy access to a mask. So tonight, these masks being purchased through this ordinance will be distributed to at-risk and minority populations in opportunity neighborhoods who are being disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, as the data clearly shows. The Department of Finance and Management was granted a waiver of the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code pursuant to Mayor Genthor's emergency declaration. This waiver was granted so that masks could be purchased and distributed to the community immediately. The city requested pricing quotes from six companies and selected the three lowest quotes from two separate companies to purchase these masks. We do have a speaker on this subject, and it is taking me a moment to pull up the name of that speaker. I think it's Mr. Israel might be the last name, if I'm?
Yes, Michael Israel.
Yes, yes, Michael Israel, are you here? If you're speaking, Mr. Israel, we can't hear you.
One second, Michael, Mr. Israel is here in person, yes, sir.
Oh, great, okay.
I apologize. Mr. Israel, you won't be able to hear the Chair, but she's asking if you would state your name, any organization that you may represent, and that you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Michael Israel, and I'm speaking on ordinance 1324, giving a contract to Role Model Inc., Role Model Magazine, and I am in agreement with them to give a contract to them, because anything that talks about a role model and everything that they're doing in the magazine, it is to encourage youth that they can be whatever they want. Now, what they're doing, the contract is for the masks, you know, to help prevent the spread of the COVID virus. So as I was thinking about that, the COVID virus and everything, I said, where did this come from? You know, everything comes from somewhere. And then I thought, I said, well, when it first started, that was the way of the Creator shutting down all the idols, all of them. You know, basketball, football, men, women, churches. Put them down, start at the basics, and start back up, wanting to look up at Him. To let us know that we didn't get so far away from God, we have to put masks on ourselves to approach one another human. And this has happened all over the world, to get the attention. Clearly, has let it be known that He is God. Now downstairs, when I walked in here, it said, "The Spirit of His people is the soul of the city." Here in Columbus, Ohio, the Spirit of the people. Now, the Spirit right now of the people, they don't know which way to go. They don't know what to believe. If they do not put God back on the throne and follow His Word, now that was a saying by a mayor in, I think, 1920. But God said a long time ago in His Word, "If my people, who are called by My name, will humble themselves and pray, turn from their wicked ways, I will forgive their sins." I will forgive them. Right now, this is where we are at. So right now, it's masks we have to wear. I believe things can be turned around, so we don't have to go to anything else, because everything is being uncovered right now with the police. That's nothing new for these council members. Everybody knows what has been going on in Columbus and every police department around the world. But now the attention is on it, God to knock down all of the distractions and let you know who it is behind it. It is the puppet masters. And each and every one of us, we are in positions to move some things. So I'm just saying to the council members here, everything that's done in the dark, or even in the closet, it's going to be heard on the rooftop. See, the truth, it will grasp your earth, and it's going to rise again. You know, you got to realize that God's Word will always prevail. One thing I have to say, you know, when you see things in place, truth forever, uh-oh, it's not true. Wrong, forever on the scaffold, truth forever on the throne. Yet that scaffold waits the future, and behind the demon knows that God keep a watch on his own. Anyway, the mask, I don't want to ask for something else. What we have to do is turn in my way.
Thank you so much, Mr. Israel. Thank you for coming to council and for supporting the mask initiative as well. And unless there are any other questions or comments from my colleagues, and if you do have a comment, colleagues, reminder to say something. Don't just raise your hand, because I can't really see you. Okay, hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Doran, Baber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. President Harden, may I move to the Recreation and Parks Committee?
Please.
Great. Next, we have ordinance 1150-2020 in Recreation and Parks to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to terminate the existing lease agreement previously authorized by ordinance number 0037-2020 to authorize the Director to enter into a new contract with PNC and Lake Erie Golf for 190 new carts delivered in June, with payments beginning in July and continuing through December 31, 2025, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $91,200 from the Rec and Parks Operation Fund, and to declare an emergency. These new carts allow Columbus's five public courses, golf courses, to accommodate one rider per cart instead of the usual two. One rider per cart is a best practice for social distancing that complies with COVID-19 health and safety guidelines. The Golf Division worked with their current supplier to add these carts. The new contract Lake Erie Golf offered will result in a total savings of $185,000 over the term of the contract, thanks in part to reducing the monthly payment per cart from $101 to $96. A bid waiver is being utilized to take advantage of these cost savings and also in recognition of the timeline on which these carts are needed. Emergency action is being considered to accommodate the immediate need for new carts to maintain safety protocols for the courses which opened this past weekend. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Doran, Baber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1390-2020. This is to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to make financial assistance available and enter into grant agreements with Columbus area 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations to provide summer camp and recreational programming to youth in central Ohio, to authorize the city auditor to establish a certificate in the amount of $2 million for grant awards, and to authorize the expenditure of $2 million from the City of Columbus Human Services CARES Fund 2207, and to declare an emergency. Providing a safe place for our kids to learn and grow during the summer is absolutely vital for them, but it's a critical support for working parents everywhere as well. For kids, these summer learning opportunities are chances to access enriching services that connect them to nature, wellness, creativity, all in ways that improve their physical and mental health and well-being. It's particularly needed during this time when kids missed out entirely on the final months of school. And for parents, these opportunities give them one more option for their child to safely stay at home while they work to support their family. Not stay at home, go do something, but not be in their direct care. I really want to thank Director Rakoski and his staff for their work to adjust the summer programming of Recreation and Parks. We are offering programs this summer to ensure that there is a safe place for kids and families, and it took a great deal of work on their part to retrofit our typical programming into CPH-approved, COVID-19-safe environments. They are launching their adjusted They are launching their adjusted summer programming today, and interested parents can visit columbus.gov/reckparkscovid19 for updated information. At the same time, we know that that alone is not enough, and that's where these new grants come in, which I'm truly excited for and appreciate the work of the department to help us get off the ground. We know that the new standards and safety procedures will reduce our capacity internally this summer and will reduce capacities of our partners as well. So providing these opportunities to help other nonprofit organizations outfit, retrofit their typical programming so that more families can be served is critically important. This grant program will help the city maximize the number of total kids across Columbus served during the summer by connecting local nonprofit organizations to funding to expand their options this summer in a way, again, that is safe. Our department worked very closely with CPH and ODH to create guidelines for summer programming. Emergency action is being considered so that the program can be implemented as soon as possible. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one ordinance in education, if I may move to that committee.
Please.
Ordinance 910-2020 to authorize the director of the Department of Education to enter into a contract with HMB Learning Circle Software LLC to provide ongoing technical support for the Sea Hive Data Platform, a program necessary to achieve the mayor's goal that every four-year-old in Columbus has access to a high-quality pre-kindergarten education, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $168,750 from the General Fund. Sea Hive is a cloud-based web application that pre-kindergarten providers use to track enrollment, assessment, and attendance data that allows teachers to make real-time decisions on instruction. Sea Hive can help improve program outcomes and increase effectiveness through its unique dashboard and reporting capabilities. The department is waiving competitive bidding due to HMB's prior experience and success providing these services in 2018 and 2019 to the city. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committees, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, I have ordinance number 1024-2020 to authorize the city auditor to transfer $1,500,000 between the object classes with the Electricity Operating Fund, to authorize the director of Public Utilities to enter into a service contract with Senniss USA Inc. in the amount of $75,346,819.86 for the enhanced meter project, to authorize the appropriation of expenditure of up to $74,843,751.86 in the Water Supply Revolving Loan Accounts Fund, to include eligible costs, including the service contract contingency and loan origination fees, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation Boden Fund for preventing wage fees, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,500,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund for the Division of Powers contribution, to authorize the director of Public Utilities to enter into a long-term spectrum lease agreement, to waive the provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to requests for a proposal, and to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget. The enhanced meter project will replace outdated and underperforming meters, installing radio transmitting infrastructure to allow wireless readings relayed to billing software at the central location, and provide environmentally efficient way to read meters. The project will greatly enhance customer service capabilities, make improvements to operational efficiencies, and provide increased revenue projections. The project is also expected to have a positive environmental impact by reducing the number of vehicles on the road to check meters. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. May I move on to the Neighborhoods Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in the Neighborhoods Committee, I have ordinance number 1281-2020 to authorize the director of Neighborhoods to enter into a contract with the Neighborhood Design Center for work associated with the implementation of the One Linden &amp; Envision Hilltop Community Plans, and to authorize the director to execute these documents necessary on behalf of the city, to authorize the expenditure of $62,200 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. The One Linden &amp; Envision Hilltop plans will be the roadmap for revitalization and will set the framework for long-term transformation in these neighborhoods. Developed through a process driven by the community, it truly embodies the aspirations of Linden and the Hilltop residents, provides data-driven and sustainable recommendations which places the needs of these neighborhoods as communicated by these neighborhoods first. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President, that's all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faver. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 1303-2020 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grant Fund and within the Streets and Highways Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands for the Arterial Street Rehabilitation Morris Road Phase 1 Sewer to Stigler Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,447,770.14 from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and up to $4,165,783.81 from the Street and Highway Improvements Non-Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract consists of widening of Morris Road to provide three lanes eastbound from I-270 to Stigler Road, and three lanes westbound from I-270 to the water plant driveway located approximately 1,300 feet west of Stigler Road. The work includes adding additional turn lanes at the intersections throughout the project limits, installing a raised median at the driveways just west of Apian Way, traffic signal replacement, overhead guide sign upgrades, sidewalk and shared-use paths, water lines, stormwater basin landscaping, and street lightning. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all I have in Public Service and Transportation. May I move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in Criminal Justice, we have ordinance number 1333-2020 to authorize the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with Alvis Incorporated for the Work Release Program, to authorize the expenditure of up to $125,000 for work release services from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. I'll now turn it over to Judge Barrows for further comments on the Work Release Program. Judge Barrows?
Thank you, Chair Faver. President Harden, members of council, it's my pleasure to come before you once again to talk about our Work Release Program by which people who have violated the law are allowed to pay their penalty to the community, but at the same time, maintain their employment, support their families, contribute to the tax base of the community. It is definitely a win-win program. Our staff person who runs that for our probation department indicated to me that the end of 2020 will complete the 10th full year of the Work Release Program, a time in which this council and the court have been partners in this very, very salutary effort. We have had some disruptions this year because of COVID. The number of people participating has gone down as a result. Our staff person, Cindy Fowler, indicates this has been a great reminder for a great number of people in our community. Within a matter of weeks, every single person who was scheduled to go into work release had been terminated or furloughed from their employment. It was a solemn reminder of how vital the ability to work is for us all, and therefore unexpectedly highlighted the extreme value of the Work Release Program. The Alvis, it's run through Alvis, and the program is following all CDC guidelines as we begin to open back up, including requiring verification from the participant's employer that they too are following CDC guidelines. And just from a statistical basis, this was statistics for the year of 2019. During that year, 79 participants who were convicted under Columbus City Code were participants. All but two of them were successful, for a success rate of 98%. The cost of those days, if served at the jail, would have been $85 a day, or $146,285. The cost of those days, served at Work Release, was $113,586. So in addition to this $33,000 difference, we also charge our participants what we call subsistence, 25% of their gross pay to participate in the program, so they've got skin in the game in order to save their jobs. The subsistence totaled $29,239. So in total, having this program in place saved the city $61,938 over the cost of having those folks go to jail. Thank you very much for your ongoing and continued support of this valued program that treats people who have offended the law as members of our community, keeps them working, and keeps them in our community.
Thank you, Judge Barrows. Are there any questions or comments to Judge Barrows or regarding the legislation from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
My voice.
My voice, my apologies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row by voice.
But I was saying, I'm abstaining from it, I'm abstaining from it, okay.
Did you say Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faver?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes.
Orders pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Barrows. Up next in Criminal Justice, we have ordinance number 1406-2020 to authorize the administrating and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with the Greater Columbus Convention Center to defray the cost of parking for residents utilizing the Convention Center as a courthouse, to authorize a transfer of appropriations between departments, to authorize an expenditure within the CARES Act Fund, and to declare an emergency. Since June 1st, the Franklin County Municipal Court has temporarily moved its traffic arraignment and eviction hearings to the Greater Columbus Convention Center. This ordinance provides residents attending court at the Convention Center with free parking during their visit. Additionally, CODA has resumed its downtown service as of last week. Residents who find themselves needing transportation from the courthouse at 375 South Ice Street to the court at the Convention Center can utilize CODA free of charge. Appropriate signage will be in place at both locations to help direct individuals in need of a service. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Judge Barrows, do you need to, would you like to add anything? You don't have to.
No, thank you, Councilmember.
Wonderful. With that, I'd move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have four items in the Economic Development Committee. First ordinance is ordinance number 1190-2020 to authorize the director of Department of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive agreement with Solom LLC for a term of up to five consecutive years, in consideration of the company's proposed capital investment of $547,000, and creation of 85 net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $12,157,000. The Columbus Department of Development is proposing to enter into a dual-rates job growth incentive agreement with Solom LLC in an amount equal to 25% of the City of Columbus income tax withheld on the Columbus payroll of new employees, and 30% of the City of Columbus income tax withheld on the Columbus payroll of new employees who are also City of Columbus residents, at the end of each calendar year for a term of up to five consecutive years. Solom LLC is a modern consulting firm focused on strategy, technology, and business transformation. Solom was formed in 1993 in Denver, Colorado. Now in over 35 markets across the US and around the world, Solom's team have autonomy to move fast and do what's right. They are backed by regional innovation hubs, a global culture of collaboration and partnerships with the world's top technology providers. Solom LLC is proposing to invest approximately $120,000 in computers, $263,000 in furniture and fixtures, and $164,000 in leasehold improvements to establish operations at 4,111 Worth Avenue, Columbus, Ohio. With this project, the company plans to relocate 19 existing full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of $3,288,000. Additionally, Solom LLC will create 85 new full-time permanent positions with a cumulative estimated annual payroll of approximately $12,157,000 to support its growth. This evening, we have Chani Mize, general manager of Solom, to share a few words on the legislation. Ms. Mize, the floor is yours.
Hello, thank you, everyone. My name is Chani Mize, and I'm the general manager of Solom Columbus. Thank you very much, Councilmember Remy, as well as Council President Harden. We're very excited to be opening a new office here in Columbus. We believe that Columbus is at the crossroads of so many great things happening in the state of Ohio, and we are excited about the global expansion that continues here. We're excited about the growth that we can bring with new hires here from people in Columbus and seeing it grow. So thank you very much for your time and for your interest in seeing our business grow here.
Thank you very much. Director Stevens, do you have any additional comments you'd like to share?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Remy. I don't have any additional comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. Excuse me for a second, let me get the right, right one here. All right, next I have ordinance number 1192-2020 to authorize the director of Department of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive agreement with Serapta Therapeutics, Inc. for a term of up to five consecutive years, in consideration of the company's proposed capital investment of $32 million and the creation of 100 net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $12,300,000. The Columbus Department of Development is proposing to enter into a dual-rates job growth incentive agreement with Serapta Therapeutics in an amount equal to 30% of the City of Columbus income tax withheld on the Columbus payroll of new employees, and 35% of the City of Columbus income tax withheld on the Columbus payroll of new employees who are also City of Columbus residents at the end of each calendar year for a term of up to five consecutive years. Serapta Therapeutics, Inc. was established in 1980 in Corvallis, Oregon. Serapta is a global commercial biotechnology company focused on genetic medicine for rare diseases. The company is in the process of building the world's largest gene therapy manufacturing capacity. Excuse me. The company's pipeline is focused on several RNA and gene therapy technologies. The company commenced central Ohio operations in 2018 and is currently building out its gene therapy center of excellence in Columbus. Serapta Therapeutics is proposing to invest approximately $1,500,000 in computers, $14,000 in machinery and equipment, $1,500,000 in furniture and fixtures, and $15 million in leasehold improvements to establish operations at 3435 Stelzer Road in Columbus. With this project, the company plans to relocate and retain 38 existing full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of $4,462,000 from 5200 Blazer Parkway in Dublin. Additionally, Serapta Therapeutics will create 100 new full-time permanent positions with a cumulative estimated annual payroll of approximately $12,300,000 to support its growth. This evening, we have Gary Charbonneau, the senior vice president of Serapta Therapeutics, to share a few words with us on this legislation. Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes, thank you for...
This evening, we have Gary Charbonneau, the Senior Vice President of Sirepta Therapeutics, to share a few words with us on this legislation. Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes, thank you for, for having me tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce you guys to Sirepta. For those of you who don't know, we are, as Emmanuel said, a rare disease company focusing on Duchenne's muscular dystrophy, L G M D, and a few other rare diseases specifically that impact children. For those of you who don't know, there are seven thousand rare diseases in the world, and most of these, many of these diseases impact children, and thirty percent of the children with rare diseases don't live to see their first birthday. So we are excited that we were able to partner with you and choose Columbus as our site. We are, you know, we are in several places on the East Coast, and by working with you in one Columbus, we were able to pull the trigger on, on making a final decision to, to grow this area and see it become possibly a new biotech hub. We believe that the downtown Columbus has a lot to offer to transfer employees. We believe that the, the Nationwide Children's Hospital and Ohio State University provide for us a great collaborative environment with, with the researchers there. I won't go into detail on what was just mentioned about the number of employees and, and the millions of dollars payroll that will be added, but these are, these are scientists that will be bringing in at an average salary of a hundred and twenty-five thousand base. That does include bonuses and other incentives. So it's, these are high, high-paying, good jobs, and we're, we are really looking forward to partnering with, with you guys and establishing this facility here, hoping to open near the end of the year, and would love to have you guys involved with ribbon cutting and all that when we get to the, the place where we can move in. So thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and Mr. Charbonneau, we appreciate that. We'd be happy to be involved. Director Stevens, do you have any comments this evening on this legislation?
Chair Remy, I, I have no comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues this evening?
Casma Remy, Priscilla. Hi. First of all, I'm very excited for this company to be in our city, especially focusing on rare diseases, and in particular focusing on our children, and so glad to welcome them here. Where, where will they be located on Stelter Road?
I can, I can answer that. We, we, I'm, I'm new to Columbus. When I was based in Boston with Sirepta, and, and I agreed to come out without ever being in Ohio. So I'm a brand-new Ohioan, I came right before COVID, so, you know, look at me. I, I, I know that when we look at the, the facility, I can look out the window and see the Hilton and the Eastern Mall. So we are right on Stelter Road, two blocks from the Hilton, that's where I can tell you we are. I, I personally reside in the Arena District, I think you have a wonderful stadium, I'm looking forward to being part of it.
All right. Thank you, welcome to Columbus.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Tyson, and welcome, Mr. Charbonneau, we're happy to have you here, and look forward to the growth of Sirepta. Seeing no other further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess so that we can move to our zoning committee. Is there a motion to recess? Oh, thank you. Madam Clerk, it's call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
All right, we are recessed, we will reconvene, uh, zoning momentarily. Councilmember Tyson, you give us the heads up when you're ready.[864.51]
Can I have a motion? Oh, so, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm good.
Regular meeting number twenty-four will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, anyone who wishes to speak for or against a council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. Reduce how prior to begin the reading of each variance on the agenda. First, a housekeeping matter. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers on tonight's agenda that require a second reading since we did not have a council meeting last Monday?
Ordinances to have second reading waived are twelve oh nine, twelve sixty, twelve sixty-one, twelve sixty-two, twelve seventy, twelve eighty-seven, twelve eighty-eight, thirteen oh two, thirteen oh four, and thirteen oh five dash twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Clerk, Clerk Blevins. I move to waive the second readings on those ordinances. Someone has a second.
Uh, please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a variance, including sta- including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. First, um, the first ordinance is variance is to grant a variance from provisions of Sections thirty-three fifty-six point oh three, C four permitted uses, thirty, thirty-three twelve point four nine, minimum number of parking spaces required, thirty-three sixty-three point four one, storage of thirty-three seventy-two point seven oh four D setback requirements, thirty-three seventy-two point seven oh seven F landscaping and screening of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at thirty-seven forty-one Indianola Avenue to permit outdoor storage of lawn maintenance equipment and reduce development standards for an existing sales and service facility in the C four Commercial District. The applicant is Como Mores, Mower Services and Sales LLC. The proposed use is outdoor storage of lawn maintenance equipment for an existing sales and service facility. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the Clintonville Area Commission's recommendation is approval, seven to zero. If, if there are no, there are no speaker slips, so there's no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. I, um, ordinance number twelve sixty dash twenty-twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three five, R three permitted uses, thirty-three twelve point four nine, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point thirteen R three area district requirements, and thirty-three thirty-two point two eight side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eight ninety-eight Franklin Avenue to conform at, to conform and expand a four-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. The applicant is Nixon Levi. The proposed use is to conform and expand an existing four-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, nine to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is, is, uh, twelve sixty-one dash twenty-twenty to rezone fifteen thirty-five North Cassie Avenue being nine point nine five acres located in the west side, on the west side of North Cassie Avenue, nine hundred and fifty feet, uh, north of Airport Drive from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to L A R one Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The North, Northeast Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Uh, Madam Chair, we have a, a person, I think, speaking on ordinance twelve sixty-one.
Oh, oh, I, okay.
I apologize, and they're actually in person.
Oh, I can't see them. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I, okay. Well, could you ask, could she come up and?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Telly, would you please approach the podium? Madam Chair, you might have to, um, read that, swear them in again, or swear them in.
Okay.
Um, or you, or maybe I can do it if I have the text. They, they can't hear you.
Okay, let me, I'm sorry. So this is, so I'll just, before beginning this on the agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertain to speaking before, um, council on variances and zones and variances. Permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents. I mean, ask that each limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. We provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. Now, I have to see, is the applicant in? We didn't get any, we didn't realize that we had anyone coming down on this ordinance, so, um...
He can hear you now, I'm councilmember or chair, so.
Can you hear me? Thank you. So I don't know if there is, um, anyone on the call for Metro Development?
Councilwoman Tyson, it's Jeff Brown representing them.
Okay, thank you. Would Jeff, do you now want to, well, we would normally have a staff presentation?
Um, I guess I'd like to hear what he, what the issue is because, as you pointed out, staff's in favor of this. The Northeast Area Commission recommended approval and the Development Commission recommended approval. So I'm, I'm happy to answer a question.
Okay, well, let's, um, I'm sorry, um, Council President Harden, what's the gentleman's name?
Uh, the gentleman is Raju Telly. And just, do we need to swear him in before he gives his testimony?
So he needs to, um, be sworn in.
Okay. Could you follow the, uh, the, the voice of Chair Tyson?
Um, so, again, if, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Mr. Telly, can you?
Yes.
Raju, you have three minutes.
Uh, I am, uh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
I'm Raju Telly from Shivji Hospitality. We are on a parcel adjourning to this new development. I understand that we have not been here for the first hearing, but since these, uh, the new development is being rezoned, I thought I might politely add something to it. Uh, we had a hotel and we have, we own several hotels around here in, in Columbus. And one of them, it was next to an apartment complex. And we used to have a lot of infiltration from the apartment, people coming into our hotel, and we had to build a wall on, on both sides. I understand the site plan is done, the landscaping is all approved. But if there is anything that the developer can do to restrict entry from the apartment complex into our property, they're also told that they have a swimming pool and a clubhouse. So, you know, there, there, there may not be a whole lot of infiltration. But however, you know, we have a free continental breakfast every morning. So if there is any effective barrier such as a fence or anything of that sort, if they can erect, that would be very much appreciated. Uh, having said that, we want to be a good neighbor. We are not, we haven't come here to object to anything. But at the same time, I do want to add my two cents. If it is possible, even if they can comply, we would greatly appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Telly.
That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Telly, were you aware of a question? Um, did you, did you get any information regarding, um, this, this zoning? Um, the zoning for this property? Did you receive any information that, for the, for the, for the, um, commission meeting, the Northeast Area Commission meeting, or anything like that?
Yes, I think, I believe, I, I did, at my home address, yes.
Thank you.
And even this notice also I received at my home address, yes.
Okay. And so were you able to go and share your comments at the, um, Area Commission meeting?
No.
Okay. Cause that would have, I mean, certainly it worth, certainly you can come and share your thoughts with us, but, um, that would have also been a, a, a great time for you to have shared your comments regarding this development.
I, I, I definitely agree with that. But since at that time, it was, it was residential hotel zoning.
Mm-hmm.
And now it is, it's an apartment zoning. So that's why we thought that we wanted to bring this up to you.
Well, thank you. I, I, so, um, Jeff, I, so I would have a, I, I don't want to speak for you, but when you presented this information, this development to the Northeast Area Commission, did you present it as, I mean, as a multi-unit residential development?
We've actually done two zonings on this, Councilmember Tyson. Originally, uh, this was going to be an extended stay type product. Again, um, City Council approved that with the support of the Area Commission. My client changed their minds and wanted to do actual, a pure residential. And so we went back through the whole process again and have the support of, of the Area Commission, Development Commission, and staff. Um, I was contacted by this gentleman's attorney on Friday afternoon. We had talked to her previously at the Development Commission, uh, but the issue of having a fence or something only came up Friday afternoon. Uh, we, I explained to his attorney, uh, that we have a clubhouse because the concern was that someone was going to come over and use their swimming pool. And I explained to his attorney that we have a state-of-the-art clubhouse, meeting room, um, uh, mini office in there, exercise, et cetera, along with a resort-style swimming pool. So we felt, um, that our residents would be staying on the property and not going, uh, across to him. Ironically, since he is going to be the, the commercial property, um, and if we, if you approve this, we would be the residential, he would require, uh, be required to put a screen up for his parking. Uh, if you look at our site plan, we basically have parking or garages in the end of one building behind his building on the west side. So we don't see that as a problem. And I conveyed that information, uh, to his attorney Friday afternoon after I was contacted.
Okay. All right, well, are there any, any questions from my colleagues? Either, um, to Attorney Brown? Or I should ask if you had any questions for Mr. Telly either? Okay. Well, um, seeing, so Council President Harden, I can't see them. I don't think I see anybody having questions or comments, is that correct?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, well, seeing that, and again, this was approved by the Northeast Area Commission, um, and they gave it, it was approved by them, it's approved by the city. So if there are no questions or comments, I will fir-, I would also ask, you know, um, Attorney Brown, since this is going to be, um, a neighbor of, of, of Metro Development that it certainly will be, I think, important for, um, Metro to can, to continue to have, to have a, a good relationship with Mr. Telly and his, and his organization. But if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Remy, clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. Um, so, ordinance twelve six, twelve sixty-two dash twenty-twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-three point two five five perimeter yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at fifteen thirty-five North Cassie Avenue to permit a multi-unit residential development with, with reduced perimeter yard in the L A R one Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the Northeast Area Commission's recommendation is approval. This is a component, um, piece of legislation for the previous one that we just approved. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Councilmember Tyson, um, we did, um, get an email from the hotel's attorney this morning asking for a meeting on-site, and we agreed to have that meeting when my client gets back in town.
Oh, okay.
To be a good neighbor.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, if there are no questions or comments, then from my, from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. Ordinance number twelve seventy dash twenty-twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three fifty-six point oh three, C four permitted uses, and thirty-three twelve point four nine minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eight eighteen Miller Avenue to conform an existing single-unit dwelling in the C four Commercial District. The applicant is Jackson Harris. The proposed use is to conform an existing single-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission recommendation is approval. If, are there any speakers in council chambers?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council, council variance, this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. I have ordinance number twelve, twelve eighty-five dash twenty-twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three nine, R four residential district, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five A four area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point fifteen R four area district requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point one nine fronting, thirty-three thirty-two point two six F minimum side yard permitted, thirty-three thirty-two point two seven rear yard, and thirty-three thirty-two point two eight side or rear yard obstruction of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at ten forty-two North Sixth Street to permit, um, two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R four residential district. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Italian Village Commission's recommendation is also approval. Are there any speakers in council chambers?
No, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you. Um, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I now move for passage.
Uh, Madam Chair, there's an amendment that needs to be, uh...
Oh, let me see. Let me look. I don't have that.
What is, what is the action?
We're at, um...
Uh, we're just admitting to emergency, Madam, Madam Chair.
Oh, let me see, and, oh, I think I... This, okay. Well, first, I move to amend to emergency.
Seconded by Councilmember Remy.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Uh, amended, and seconded by Remy for passage. Madam, uh, clerk, would you please call the row?
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
And it's passed.
Thank you. Um, I now have, okay. Ordinance number, anyone, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. It's ordinance number twelve eighty-six dash twenty-twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three seven R two F residential district for the property located at one forty through one forty-six East Mohler Street to conform an existing three-unit dwelling in the R two F residential district. The applicant is Jeffrey A. Carroll. The proposed use is to conform an existing three-unit dwelling. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, eleven to zero. Are there any speakers in council chambers?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The, I'm, I'm, uh, on the WebEx. Can you hear me?
Oh, on WebEx?
Yes. Yes, Jeffrey Carroll.
Oh, Jeffrey Carroll. Well, we didn't have, so we don't have a speaker, okay, Jeffrey Carroll. All right, Mr. Carroll, um, certainly if you were sworn in already, correct?
Right, uh-huh.
Okay, so, any comments? Well, let's see. Um, any comments you'd like to make? Please do so now.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I did it properly. I was trying to get an emergency, uh, amend to emergency. Um, I'm trying to get it, um, get refinancing taken care of, and my, my time with, uh, Fifth Third is running out. So, uh, that's why I would like to get it taken care of as quickly as possible, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carroll, did you contact our office today? Or any, had you contacted our office about admitting this to emergency?
No, I, I filed, I filed it last, uh, Wednesday by the deadline, I believe, um...
Councilmember Tyson, I apologize. It's marked on the, um, on your agenda.
I don't have it on my, it's not, I don't, I'm sorry.
On the marked agenda, um, it should be marked there. I, my apologies.
I'm sorry. Okay, it's not marked on my agenda, so, that's okay. I'll just, um, let me look. No, I don't have, mm-hmm, I don't have it on mine. But that's okay. All right, well, we will be, um, we are, let me see, yeah, I've got all these different agendas. So, okay, so first, let's, let's move to amend, to amend to emergency.
Okay. Yeah, um, basically, we're just trying to comply with, uh, we get so far with the bank, and then they do an appraisal, and it just turned up, uh, about, uh, three or four months ago, I guess now. So, um, I've gotten to the point that I'm real close to the fini-, on the finish line here, so. All right.
All right.
I think the Chair called for us to, to amend to emergency, and I think there was a second by Councilmember Remy. So clerk, would you call the row?
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
All right, now it's been a minute to emergency.
Yeah, thank you, now move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And I also, um, Clerk Bl-, Clerk Blevins, I see that I have a document here that has, um, not only, uh, waived second readings, but also a mental emergency. So, I apologize, I do have another document here.
The second readings have been waived for you. You just need to do the others. My, so, about that?
No problem, I'm, now, we've got it. Thank you very much.
I just, I, I just had one question. Do I, is, am I good now? Do I have to file this now down at, uh, anywhere? Or, I wasn't sure what to do next.
No, I think we've already done it. You, if you've, you don't, I don't think you have to fi-, file it anywhere else.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much, God bless everyone.
Same to you, thank you. All right. Okay, so our next, we, so now we're at twelve eighty, ordinance twelve eighty-seven dash twenty-twenty to rezone thirteen seventy-two North Grant Street being one point four seven acres located at the northeast corner of North Grant Avenue and East Fifth, East Fifth Avenue from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to AR two Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Wyland Park Development LLC. The proposed use is why is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the University Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Um, I would first like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, Shannon.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the site, the site consists of one undeveloped parcel zoned in CPD Commercial Plan Development District, uh, which permits age-restricted senior housing, uh, of seventy units. Uh, the requested AR two Apartment Residential District will permit multi-unit residential development consisting of approximately sixty-six units. That supports the proposed zoning as it is consistent with the University Area Plan's recommendation for higher-intensity residential land uses and is consistent with the development pattern of the surrounding area. Concurrent council variance, CD nineteen dash one twenty-four is also requested vary yard area height, building size, and, uh, parking coverage. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And are, are there any questions for Ms. Pine? Thank you, Azee. And the applicant is Wyland Park Development LLC. Are they in council chamber, on the phone?
Uh, this is Dave Terry, Councilmember Tyson, I'm present.
Thank you. Can you just give an update on, cause we have a letter, we have a, uh, I'm, I'm, sorry. We have a letter on the resident that is, that is... We have a letter on the resident that is, is approved, so could you please just give us a presentation on that? On this, on development.
Uh, sure, happy to. The, um, I, I did the zoning in two thousand and twelve for the seventy unit senior housing development, that, uh, that project didn't happen for, uh, reasons unrelated to zoning. Um, this proposal is for sixty-six units of multifamily with sixty-seven parking spaces, the seventy unit senior housing development had seventy parking spaces, both for, one per unit. The, um, the site is in the University Area Commission and also therefore in the University Planning Overlay and the, um, University Planning Overlay has a formula for how parking is established and this, this project is in compliance with parking, there is no variance to parking. We, um, in addition to staff support, the University Area Commission process uh, requires meeting with the Wyland Park Civic Association, which I did, and Wyland Park Civic supports this application as stated, um, in, in fact, they were interested in there being uh, more units there, potentially a taller building. Uh, University Area Commission supports, the Development Commission supports. Um, I understand there's, there's a, a concern about parking that, that council was contacted about. Uh, there's an adjacent forty-five unit building, I, I believe it's forty-five units that's presently under construction, there, there may be some street congestion on parking from the construction workers. The area to the north is part of the, uh, Grant Park Development also and is, uh, parcel three of the Grant Park zoning, fifty townhouses which, uh, townhouses for sale, all designed with two car garages and additional surface parking that for that development area, parking, um, actually exceeds code requirement, so, um, my, my, my guess is that there just may be some congestion with construction workers at the moment. But this, this has been supported at every, every review through the process.
All right, thank you. So the list, we have a letter from Hillary, Hillary McDonald and her concern is certainly, um, regarding this twelve eighty-seven and twelve eighty-eight, which is a component docu, um, of legislation, but there, um, she is saying that this proposed development would cause a major overflow with parking issues. There's no parking for the approximate thirty unit building being built. Um, and you said this is senior housing, but she is, said this will cause a great deal of parking congestion on surrounding streets, including, um, Co- Co-Marty Lane, which is a private road, and this will put an undue burden, she says, upon her. And that she feels as though that this should be, um, a community friendly use of this space. Uh, you know, dog park, uh, let's see, Dog Park, et cetera, Grant Park is still lacking in amenities to Jeffrey Park, et cetera, so she is saying that, um, she wishes that there was, this would be a more community friendly use of this space and not a, a residential space. And so, again, Mr. Perry, you're saying that, um, from your, and I know it has all the approvals, but it would not be a parking issue, is that what you're saying to me?
There is no, uh, there is no code required parking issue, the project is fully compliant.
Okay.
One of, one of the remaining phases of Grant Park, um, is the development of an approximate nine tenths of an acre park, uh, slightly farther north on Grant, and I, I don't think that has opened yet but relative to, uh, some open space and dog area and so on, that's, that uh, either is or will be provided within the Grant Park Development.
All right, thank you. Are there, are there any questions, Mr. Perry, or Mr. Perry? All right, seeing none, I would move for passage.
Seconded by Councilman Remy, clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. This is ordinance, um, twelve eighty-eight dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the parking provisions of sections thirty-three twenty-five point nine oh seven A parking, thirty-three twenty-five point nine oh nine A building lines, thirty-three twenty-five point nine eleven C building separate, building separation in size, thirty-three twenty-five point nine one three maximum floor area, uh, ratio, thirty-three twenty-five point nine one five AB height and thirty-three thirty-three point two five five perimeter yard of Columbus City Codes for property located at thirteen seventy-two North Grant Avenue to permit a multi-unit residential development with, with reduced development standards in the AR two Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Wyland Park Development LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the University Area Commission's recommendation is approval. And again, we just had the previous discussion on this, um, regarding this development, and again, the letter that, um, Hillary McDonald is for, was for the previous, um, or, ordinance and is also the same comments for this particular ordinance, so she is, um, not, in not, in approval of this ordinance. Uh, are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I will now move, um, for passage.
Seconded by Councilman Remy, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, the next ordinance is thirteen oh two dash twenty twenty to amend ordinance number twenty-two oh three dash two thousand and nineteen, passed November the ninth of two thousand and nineteen for property located at two fifty-nine Park Road by replacing sections one and three with new sections to revise the legal description and to modify the site plan and limitation text for the LM Limited Manufacturing District. This again is an ordinance amendment, the proposed use is to amend section one to add a right of way dedication lang, a right of way dedication language and section three to allow increase in the self-storage building area. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommendation is nine to zero. And if there are no questions or comments, I would move for passage.
Is there a second? A second by Councilman Remy, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, the next ordinance is thirteen oh four dash twenty twenty to rezoom forty-eight seventy-one Roberts Road being eight point nine five acres located on the south side of Roberts Road to, to, two hundred and thirteen feet south, I mean, I'm sorry, two hundred and thirteen feet east of Walkout Road from R one Residential District to L AR one Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is preferred living, the proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Far West Air Commission's recommendation is approval seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, um, I first move to, um, amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this vari, this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, please answer, I will.
I will.
I will.
Thank you. Um, there, this ordinance number thirteen oh five twenty twenty to grant a variance to the provisions of sections thirty-three, thirty-three point eighteen building lines and thirty-three, thirty-three point two five five perimeter, yeah, perimeter yard of Columbus City Codes for property located at forty-eight seventy-one Roberts Road to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the L AR one Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is preferred living. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval and the Far West Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, please answer, I will. I will. Thank you. This is a final ordinance in this committee, this evening, it's thirteen oh seven dash twenty twenty to grant a variance for provisions of sections thirty-three, thirty-two point oh three five, R three Residential District, thirty-three, thirty-two point oh five area district lot with requirements, thirty-three, thirty-two point thirteen, R three area district requirements, thirty-three, thirty-two point nine, point nineteen fronting and thirty-three, thirty-two point two seven rear yard of Columbus City Codes for property located at five ninety Carpenter Street to permit two single unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R three Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. Proposed use is two single unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval. The Livingston Avenue Air Commission's recommendation is approval nine to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Uh, council member, or madam chair, I think there's an amendment on that one as well.
Oh. Admit to emergency.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I first want to amend to emergency.
All right, it's seconded by, uh, Councilman Remy, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Seconded by Remy, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
And it is passed.
And that concludes the zoning agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair, may I get a motion to re, uh, to adjourn, uh, zoning, the seconded and moved and seconded, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Uh, right, this meeting is, uh, convened, we will, uh, reconvene shortly. Motion to reconvene, meeting number twenty-three?
The move.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
All right, we are in the Economic Development Committee, that committee is chaired by Councilman Remy, councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Uh, next ordinance, I have ordinance twelve forty-seven twenty twenty to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to accept and execute a reimbursable grant agreement of two one million dollars from the state of Ohio acting by and through the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission to authorize the appropriation of up to one million in the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The grant funding, along with additional public and private funding, will be used to construct the North Market Grand Atrium adjacent to the current North Market Building as part of the construction of the North Market Tower. The Grand Atrium will, the Grand Atrium will host cultural events through the presentation of the visual, musical and other arts. In two thousand and sixteen, the city began a request for proposals process for the surface parking lot adjacent to the existing North Market Building with the goal of creating a sustainable long-term financial structure to support the North Market. The Evaluation Committee selected a proposal by the development team which includes a twenty-six story mixed-use department development, including an expansion of the North Market, a Grand Atrium, an outdoor patio and entrance, additional retail residential units, Class A commercial office, hotel and structured parking. To support these efforts, the Department of Development was invited to apply for a million dollars in grant assistance from the State of Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for the construction of the North Market Grand Atrium and was awarded said grant. The grant requires at least a fifty percent match and the mark, match will be. The grant requires at least a fifty percent match, and the mark match will be provided by the North Market Development Authority. Under separate ordinances, the Director of Department of Development will request council approval to into an, into an agreement for the North Market Development Authority to provide the match and to enter into an agreement to expend these funds. The city will become a pass-through entity for this grant. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the project schedule. Director Stevens, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to share this evening?
Uh, no, Chair Remy, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Finally, I have in Economic Development, I have ordinance number twelve eighty-nine twenty twenty to dissolve the enterprise zone agreement with Montwards LLC and to direct the department, the Director of Department of Development to notify as necessary the local and state tax authorities and to declare an emergency. Columbus City Council by ordinance sixteen fifty-one twenty nineteen passed on July twenty-second nineteen twenty nineteen authorized the city of Columbus to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Montwards LLC for a tax abatement of seventy-five percent for a period of ten consecutive years in consideration of a proposed investment of approximately one and a half million in real, real property improvements and the creation of four net new full-time positions with an annual payroll of one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred. Related to the renovation of an existing vacant distribution and warehouse facility consisting of approximately two hundred and sixty thousand square feet at five twenty-five North Nelson. In a letter to the city dated April thirty twenty twenty, Enterprise indicated that the, uh, Montwards, um, indicated that the project as described in the end agreement will no longer occur due to its change in the strategic development plans. With this strategic change, instead of two buildings, including new construction, a separate building renovation, the Montred will still construct a new three hundred thousand square foot speculative distribution warehouse facility with a corresponding parket, parking surface to accommodate an anticipated larger tenant under a separate agreement. Director Stevens, do you have any comments about this legislation this evening?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council. The only thing I would point out is that this property has not received or there's been no foregone, uh, taxes on as a result of this abatement today.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have this evening in Economic Development. If, with your permission, I'd like to proceed with the Administration Committee.
Please.
Tonight in Administration, I have one ordinance, uh, it's ordinance number twelve thirty-six twenty twenty to authorize the Civil Service Commission Executive Director to enter into a contract with Excel Soft Technologies for exam item bank management and administration software as a service for the city's uniformed and non-uniformed testing programs to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter three twenty-nine, to authorize the expenditure of seventy thousand dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Essential to the exam development and review process is the need for test item metadata that is complete, detailed, and easily accessible for analysis. The analysis process is critical to ensuring test items and the exam overall are valid, reliable, and eliminate adverse impact in the selection process. While there are a number of exam item bank management and administration soft solutions available on the market, the commission's review of these products revealed Excel Soft offered the most breadth and depth of functionality and features necessary for our detailed analysis of test item performance, both upon initial use and over multiple exam administrations. Because commission research and you, and the use of the software for a multi-month trial period has confirmed Excel Soft is the product currently available that will best meet the needs of the commission's testing programs, this ordinance also seeks authority to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code. I want to turn the floor over to Liz Reed, the Executive Assistant Director of the City of Columbus Civil Service Commission, to bring us some insight on this legislation. Liz, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, Councilmember Remy and, uh, other council members.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. Uh, so yes, regarding this particular, um, Excel soft, software, this is a test management process. We looked at several different, um, different organizations that had similar products, but none had the, as mentioned in, as you mentioned, has the breadth and depth that this does. It will allow us to use this both for our uniform testing as well as non-uniformed. Um, it has the capacity of, in terms of administration for paper administrations as well as, uh, computer examinations with computer, with video and that sort of thing. So it has the full breadth. And I think most importantly, what it does is it gives us the data so we can make data-driven decisions regarding the testing that we do. So we're looking forward to, um, continuing the use of this product. We have demoed it to ensure that it does have all of the things, um, and capabilities that it promises to have. And, uh, for that, we wish to, uh, forego the, uh, and have a, I'm sorry, forego the waiver on this piece. I'm sorry, we request a waiver on this piece, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And that's all I have in Administration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Um, I have my first ordinance is ordinance twelve twenty-seven dash twenty twenty is to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the COVID nineteen contact tracing grant program in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to authorize the appropriation of eight hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emerg- emergency. Um, Michael Fielding from the Department of Public Health is now going to share some comments regarding the importance of this funding. Michael?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Yes, this is a key mission for, uh, Columbus Public Health. To date, we have over five thousand, uh, cases of COVID nineteen. And we also just surpassed the five thousand mark for case contacts. So this is a pretty lengthy, detailed process where we work with, uh, the individuals that have become exposed to, um, or for potential exposure to a COVID nineteen case. And so we interview these individuals, we give them guidance on how to protect themselves, protect their family, and to prevent the spread, uh, of the COVID nineteen. As Dr. Roberts usually mentions or always mentions, this is not a sprint and this is a marathon to ensure we are protecting the public. We will be doing the, uh, case contacts for quite some time, uh, through the remainder of this year and probably into the next. So these dollars help us with personnel expenditures, uh, man, they're helping us hire forty-eight temporary staff to, to assist us with this case contact tracing.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, and just appreciate the work that, all the work that is being done by, um, the staff at Columbus Public Health. Uh, are there any questions for Michael? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Uh, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is twelve thirty-one twenty twenty to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Moms Quit for Two Grant Program in the amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighteen cents to authorize the appropriation of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighteen cents to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health has been a grant from the Ohio Department of Health. This ordinance is needed to accept the appropriation of the hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred, hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighteen cents and grant monies for, to fund the fiscal year twenty-one Moms to Quit for Two Grant Program for the, from the period of July one of twenty twenty through June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Smoking during pregnancy remains one of the most preventable causes of infant mortality. According, according to the two hundred and fif- two thousand and fifteen data released by the Ohio Department of Health, twenty point four of all Ohio mothers and twenty-three point four percent of Franklin County WIC recipients reported smoking before or during pregnancy. The purpose of the Moms Quit for Two Program, an evidence-based smoking cessation program, is to increase smoking, is to increase smoking cessation rates among pregnant and postpartum women by offering, um, individualized tobacco, uh, cessation treatment, monitoring progress, and providing incentives for remaining smoke-free. This program aims to improve birth outcomes and reduce, reduce low birth weight, pre-term birth rate, and increase overall quit rate as part of a larger strategy to reduce infant mortality. In two thousand nineteen, eighty-two percent of babies delivered in the program were full-term and healthy, and eighty-six percent of participating, participants remaining smoke-free throughout the baby's first year of life. At the end of two thousand nineteen, two hundred and thirty participants were enrolled, and there were six hundred and thirty-eight referrals from the community and clinical partnerships. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage from my colleagues.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirteen seventy-three dash twenty twenty is to authorize the Department of Development to enter into an agreement with the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County in the amount up to, um, a hundred thousand dollars to add needed capacity to the Human Service Chamber's COVID nineteen specific services to its members and the nonprofit sector, to authorize an expenditure of up to a hundred thousand dollars from the CARES Act Fund, to authorize a payment of expenses starting March one twenty twenty and to declare an emergency. Uh, I do believe, uh, um, Executive Director of the Human Service Chamber is on the call, Mr. Michael Corey, he can certainly share, um, provide us with some information on the importance of this, uh, this ordinance. Michael?
Councilmember Tyson, uh, members of council, thank you so much, uh, A for work, uh, through this crisis and B, uh, your support for the health and human services sector and our, uh, now eighty-four plus members, uh, and certainly, um, your support through this piece of legislation. Um, we have been, uh, working as diligently as we can since about March third, trying to divert a lot of our work to support our members, um, through this crisis, and this particular funding will have two specific roles. Um, one will be to identify and hire, um, a staffer to organize and lead and oversee, um, a lot of our COVID-specific work, um, including and especially the second part of what this will fund, which is a range of shared services that we believe can be, um, phenomenally beneficial to our membership, uh, through this crisis. The opportunity that you have afforded here to invest in the breadth of the sector through the work we're going to try and do, uh, I think is going to, um, be of benefit to the community many times over, uh, including and especially to our, to our members, of course. So, so thank you, um, deeply for, um, the investment that you're making here. Um, we think that there's, excuse me, a chance to identify some practices that can be beneficial, not only now, uh, in the wake of this historic moment, um, but that can sustain well beyond it. And we aim to, um, use every penny that's been afforded to us, um, to that end. Um, our sector's been working, um, extremely hard to try and meet the needs of the community, which have been billowing, uh, as you all well know, uh, and we believe this is a chance for us to, um, be of even greater assistance to our members than we hope that we have been since this crisis began. So with that, uh, thank you so much for your work. Thank you so much for your ongoing support for us, the chamber, and for all of our members and the hundreds of thousands of people that our organization serves.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your leadership and certainly realize that a lot of the agencies are in need of, of personal protective equipment, um, legal needs, accounting, other business support, technology needs, and so this position will help you to work with those, um, nonprofit organizations to make sure that they can continue to, to keep themselves safe, to be able to provide services to our community. And so I appreciate your leadership. If there are no questions or comments for, um, for Mr. Corey, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in, um, in Human Services, Health and Human Services this evening is ordinance fourteen oh four dash twenty twenty to authorize the Columbus City Council to change the funding source for the funds remaining on that ACP, um, zero, ACP, oh, zero zero five two three nine dash two from emergency human services funds, the hotel motel excise tax, to the care funds to authorize the expenditure of up to one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents from the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes a Columbus City auditor to change the funding source for some of the social service contracts authorized under ordinance, um, five seventy-one dash twenty twenty. The funding source for twenty-four, the forty-four contracts will be changed from emergency human services, um, EHS funding, hotel motel excise tax, to the CARES Act funding. Due to the economic impact of the coronavirus, actual hotel motel excise collections are anticipated to be significantly less than anticipated. The general fund portion of the funding will not change. The economic fallout from the coronavirus has impacted Ohio and the national economy at historic levels. Ohio's unemployment rate has risen to sixteen point eight, an increase of eleven percent versus the pre-coronavirus levels. Similarly, the Columbus unemployment level has risen to thirteen point seven, an increase of nine point five versus the pre-coronavirus levels. The travel and tourism sector of the economy has been disproportionately impacted and is experiencing unprecedented contraction in business due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Marriott and Bellwether for their industry recently projected a seventy-five percent decrease in global revenues and a ninety percent decrease in domestic revenues. The airline industry has been similarly impacted with domestic U.S. flights decreasing seventy percent over the coronavirus levels. The aforementioned economic, uh, impacts to travel and tourism has resulted in a significant decrease in the twenty twenty hotel motel ex- excise tax proceeds, which in turn has drastically reduced funding available for social service contracts. And so this is an important piece of legislation because this will make sure that those, um, nonprofit agencies, and we just mentioned that twenty-four of the forty-four will be able to, um, continue, will be able to be fully funded and be able to continue to provide the services to our, our residents. And if there are no other, there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, seeing that, I would move for passage.
Seconded by Remy, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as in, uh, from the floor, I'm going to read three appointments from the mayor's office. These were not on the regular agenda, just based off of a, a era, uh, in getting them in. The first, uh, appointment is A A A zero zero six zero twenty twenty. It's a reappointment of Stephen Whitman, uh, three thirty West Spring Street, Suite five hundred, Columbus, Ohio, to serve on Downtown Commission with a new term expiration date of June first twenty twenty-four. If there are no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
And, uh, adopted. Uh, the next appointment is A zero 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 six one dash twenty twenty is the reappointment of Tony Slannick, Principal Director of Columbus O H M Advisors, five eighty North Fourth Street, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one five, to serve on the Downtown Commission with a new term expiration date of June first twenty twenty-four. If there are no question or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. And our final, uh, resolution is A zero zero six two dash twenty twenty, appointment Lisa McLennamont, twenty-six seventy-seven Adams Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four three two zero two, to serve on the Columbus Art Commission, replacing Barbara Nicholson with a term expiration date of July thirty-first twenty twenty-one. with a term expiration date of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. If there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harden.
Uh, adopted. Seeing no further business, we come for council. Um, we have several non-agenda speaker slips, which will make sure to get, uh, circulated around, speaker-written testimony that will circulate around to council members. But seeing no further, uh, business, come for council, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Have a good evening, guys.